Oh, I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 21 joint meeting, the Nelson County Board of Supervisors and the Nelson County Board. If we can stand for a little bit. Mr. Chief?
Glad to lead you to the flag of the United States of America, and to the revolution which extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you, everybody, for being here. Mr. Chief and myself will tag team facilitation of the meeting as we go. I just wanted to do a few recognitions while we're here. Representing the school administration, Shannon Rivers here, so she's going to be maybe participating if we ask. I don't know exactly what's going to happen. Also, Steve Carter and Ms. Candy Gary here from the county administration. If and when we need some clarification on things, we have these folks here that can do that. The agenda for the meeting is going to be fairly informal. We're going to try to ping pong between the two boards in terms of comments. I will recognize the board supervisor members and the two board members. Each member of the two boards will have numerous opportunities to address whatever topics are on their mind, whatever comes up. Whatever comes up is what we will be discussing. But at some point, as we wrap things up, we're going to talk about possibly next steps for the boards together or the boards separately, however that comes out. Those suggestions may be made by the board.
Ernie, can y'all understand what he's saying?
Yeah, it's hard for us.
It's very hard.
It's because the speaker's pointing.
Maybe if that monitor was maybe turned a little bit. Is that better?
Well, not.
Well, I can only speak out. Oh, now do it again, let me know.
I think being over there is harder.
We were just saying the last meeting, we also had some issues with the fan we think.
We couldn't hear when you were sitting over there, so if you want to switch with me, Tom.
Well, you can slide your desk mic to your microphone. So you can hear me, can you?
Well, because you didn't get into your mic. Get up there and talk to me.
It's just something, it's some noise. You're talking about a fan?
Yeah, there's a fan that's causing background noise. Makes it harder to hear on that side of the stage.
Can the fan be turned off?
It's probably something like that, I don't know what you mean.
While we take, while we do that, I'm going to let Mr. Chief start and brief an hour on my school.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. Want to thank Mr. Reed and the board supervisors for helping make this possible and our board, the school board, for coming together and meeting. We've been looking forward to this. As Mr. Reed said, this is going to be a pretty open agenda, open discussion. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak. We're going to try to limit it to somewhat of a fair time limit, so each person can speak on the topic that they choose to speak on and then obviously, you know, members can interact with conversation. I'd also like to thank the members of the county staff and the school board staff for coming this evening too, for backup on data in case we should need it. Was that better than you think?
Yeah, that makes all the difference in the world.
Okay, what I would ask is, while someone's talking, if someone wants to make a response, make a hand check, give me a little, give me a little wave. I'll get your name down in front of, make sure I get everybody in the order they're in. If someone hasn't had a chance to speak yet and they want to develop our community, get them first. So, getting things started, it was hard, is anyone interested in starting out?
I just wanted to start by saying that I appreciate what the school board has done in this crisis. And it's not just the crisis of the pandemic, it's also the unintended consequences of the testing and the whole no child left behind business. And that, yeah, maybe we can move on beyond this. And it is possible with the resources, with the children, with the teachers, and the boards that we have in Nelson County, not only have a good school system, but we can have a great school system. And I think we should aspire to that.
Did you say make schools great again?
What?
So, on the school board's end, who would like to go first?
I didn't prepare, I didn't prepare anything to say. We had talked about having certain topics on the, you know, conversations. One of them, I think, comes up first for me is, you know, how do we go about talking to each other on a regular basis going forward? We used to do the two by twos and that sort of thing, and I don't know how they fell off, but I think that was a pretty good, effective way of keeping the lines of communication open, which I think are super important between the two groups. And then we can address, you know, the other considerations that we have, which are short term and long term planning, focusing, you know, a lot on the capital projects that we have to keep the schools up to par. And I guess, you know, overall strategic planning for the, from a county perspective as well, because, you know, one of the challenges we have is that our enrollment is declining, which, you know, on the face of it, looks like something we're doing, but possibly is something that we're all in the county doing from a lack of planning or maybe not planning for bringing in babies or, you know, six years ago, you know, we're suffering now, trying to make a bad joke. But anyway, just to keep those lines of communication open so that we can, you know, try to make some plans that work for both the schools and for the county just in general. And then to respond a little bit to Mr. Barton, I think that we all are trying as hard as we possibly can to make our schools the best we can possibly have, you know? And I don't think, I think that comes from the heart, not from the water, a lot of the time. But we appreciate your support and thank you very much for, you know, agreeing to come and meet. It matters a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Barton?
Yep, well, first of all, glad to be back here, deja vu a little bit on the stage here. But I think these meetings between two boards, I've said it as a school board member, I say it as a board supervisor member, these are very important for us, for our communication, for the success of the two boards. I do look forward to when we can have a little less formal meeting, where we can just kind of be together and talk and have a conversation. I think that's where the real work takes place. Two by twos are great, you know, we got started last year. We had a two by two, what, the first three weeks of the year last year, and we had great intentions of doing that throughout the year, and then COVID hits, you know? So that kind of derailed that a little bit. I do think we're kind of getting to a point now with COVID that some of us may be more comfortable than others continuing to do that. I, for one, and whether if anybody wants to go ahead to do it, I'm up for it. But, you know, of course, being safe and certainly distance and all that, I think that's important. But the meetings are imperative between the two boards. And not only these meetings, but when you're driving down the road and picking up the phone and saying, hey, Shannon, you know, tell me about this, or here's an idea, George, what's going on, or, you know, just having those conversations across the boards, I think that's important. That doesn't always have to be a formal agenda item. I think looking around in this room, you know, there's so many of us who have personal relationships in addition to this professional relationship that I think that should be easy for us to do as two boards. You know, we're, you know, and Mr. Barton's always talking about some, you know, what makes this community great, and to me, that's one of the things that makes us great is this community that we have as board members. So I think we need to capitalize on that.
Mr. Ervin?
Yes, so first of all, I'm excited that this meeting is actually taking place. We have tried on numerous occasions to all get around the table, and my first hope is that this is not the first and or last meeting of this year. I completely agree with what David Carr just said. It is critical that these two boards talk. It is critical that these two boards work together. And it's critical that we share information, not just two by two, but with all members of the board. I think there's a lot of things at stake. I think there are a lot of things that we have come to the table before to chat about, whether it's capital improvement, whether it's things going on in the school. And I, for one, as long as I've been on the board, just cannot faking up the support that you all have given us. I know, for one, Mr. Barton and I have had some numerous communications, and I really appreciate the time that we've had to talk and have some wonderful conversations of being chair to chair. But I do think that those, all of these conversations are critical. And my next step, just to piggyback on something Mr. Reed said that we're going to look at going forward, is I would love to, by the time you get out of here, set whether we're going to do biannual meetings or whether we're going to do quarterly meetings as a board. If we can agree on that, then I think we're moving forward, at least, in making sure that the two boards speak. Something else, and I know Mark had touched on this, is in regards to capital improvement, capital planning, strategic planning. I think that's probably one of the great and probably one of the top agenda items that we probably need to have. We can start looking at all of the projects that we have. For some of these, I'm sure David could look at this list and say, they were items that were on the board when he was here. There are certainly some of these items on the board that have been here since I've been on the board. And at some point, you really want to be able to chip away at them. It would be nice if we could have, whether it is a three to five year plan and lock four or five of them together, and then have a five to seven year plan, or whatever that timetable is. But if we can all agree to start looking at those items and discuss how we can potentially go about fulfilling them. Because it goes back to what you just said, Mr. Barton. We want our school systems good, we want our school systems great, we want the best school systems here in Nelson County. So again, we appreciate you all's support and it's good to see each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Hey, I just wanted to also echo many of the thanks, obviously, to the hardworking school folks out here, the many teachers who have had to get creative amidst the COVID and all the difficulties that have come with that. I also want to thank the chairman for arranging this joint meeting. I think this is critical to having not only an efficient government, but a transparent one, and us having to be able to have open dialogue with each other about our concerns and thoughts and goals. As I, I'm just going to use roughly the paragraph where it asks questions of priorities, successes, and challenges and questions, and I'm going to give some of those in this little opening, if that's right, Mr. Chairman. I know one of my biggest priorities moving forward, obviously, with the school system is how I can support career and ethical education here in Nelson County. As we have seen with the COVID epidemic, we've seen careers change, we've seen requirements change, and we've seen a lot of people learn how to get educated from the household. I'm grateful for the board supervisors and broadband authority for our efforts in being one of the first municipalities to secure universal internet. And I'm glad that is, we've answered the how, and of course, we're going to work on expediting that. But the next step is, is how is it that we can attract industry into Nelson County and make this place an affordable place for people to want to live and have a career? Which leads me into the next comment that I want to talk about is the pupil, the pupil situation. Obviously, we know this is not just an issue that Nelson County struggles with, but really much of rural Virginia and America. You know, I was speaking with Mr. Chief, and as many of you know, I've grown up with some of your children and relatives, and culture's changing, you know? My generation is not having as many children as prior staff. You know, for whatever reasons that may be, but it's going to be important that we address that on a cultural basis of what the future that looks like and how we develop Nelson County around that. And I'd like to, I'd like to get into that. I'm not going to ask for this question to be answered immediately, but I'm just going to be curious to staff what the state is expecting on the pupil situation and what they're asking for. I didn't get a chance to see what it's looking like, but maybe at some point after this, if I, that could be answered. My next comment is about capital improvements. I realize that is the biggest concern that many of you have. I would like to model after Greene County, which has a board supervisor, school board joint committee. I think what would be very helpful is if you had two board supervisors and two school board kind of buy in together and say, hey, these are the concerns. That way, we can go into our budget session with two people who kind of bought in and can either explain or prioritize and assist you all in your planning. You're right, Mrs. Turner Giles has mentioned the capital improvements plan that's existed and many of the items that have been on there since she's been here. Yeah, I've seen the same one over and over and over again, and we've answered just about none of them, other than the ones that were a major concern. I would like to support creating a committee of two board supervisors, two school board, and county staff, just, and it doesn't even have to be something more than just giving us good suggestion. Because I think having that two board member buy-in is going to make it much more efficient and effective when it comes to our workshops and making capital improvement decisions. Moving on into my next point, obviously, you know, we talked about some of the many issues that we have here in Nelson County. And broadband was one of the biggest. The second biggest is housing, you know? Many of our students are struggling with having housing access in Nelson County to be an affordable place to live. And I think when we talk about prioritization of how we can increase that people are at the very least, do damage control of the pupil wants, we need to start talking about housing and internet and the equities around that and how you can be connected into our economy. It's, we have a beautiful place, it's a wonderful community. Even though a lot of people think Nelson County is getting overpopulated, that's wrong. Our supply has stayed stagnant, if not dropped. So, moving on from that, the communication is key. I wish to continue doing two by twos. I would gladly do with Mr. Carr and doing a two by two. This doesn't have to be a formal thing, and I think that's one thing. Listen, we're all, we all know who we are, we can kind of pick some dates and pick some times and build some distance properly and have great discussion. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, that is all the comments I have.
Mr. Barton?
Hey, I want to thank you all for doing this. As the baby on the school board, I am appreciative to be a part of this group the first joint board meeting. I think we are way more symbiotic probably than we even realize in where our goals are at the end of the day, between the school board, between the board supervisors. We really all do want what's best for the kids, as well as what's best for the county. One, they usually go hand in hand, I believe, no doubt. There's some themes that I think continue, everybody seems to be concerned and have concerns, or will continue discussions on some of the same things. Strategic planning, pupil enrollment, and open communication. And I think as we move forward, I agree with Mr. Rutherford, I think it's a great idea. And one of the things that we've talked about is capital improvements are big. I mean, that's really good for our school. We're at the point where we can't continue to push off certain jobs because of the safety issues, not in first students, but for community members who use those buildings. So, you know, in the interest of being collaborative, I think it is a great idea to create, create that committee and work together. I think at the end of the day, we do want the best of the system. We want the best county, we want the best of the system. And at the end of the day, I think that planning starts here with us and everybody moving toward, whether it's collaboratively, being transparent with what their individual and their team goals are. Because for us all to succeed at the end of the day, we've got to be a team, we've got to work together, and we've got to have common objectives in the middle of the night. And I'm very, very thankful to be a part of this one, and taking the time to sit down and talk to us as well as the people we work with.
Thank you. Mr. Ervin?
I guess I'm going to be the bad guy. Until we can get this school operating under control, you can get rid of all this capital plans and all this other stuff. Right now, we're required, I believe it was, the state requirements of $7.5 million, is that correctly? Well, we produce another $7.5 million, 100% of the county's money. And with an increase asked this year, I don't know, we've got the board to go, make it better, but you ask $800,000 in addition, we're trying to all these people, and you have asked for more than what our taxes will produce more. Our increase in taxes to bring in is right at or below what you want for the school budget. Now, to me, I'm wasting time to operate capital when you, if you can't get the main thing under control and get where we can, you know, the people in the county can only afford so much. I mean, not everybody's got these great jobs and all these other things. Some of them are living off of social security. Some of them are living off fixed incomes. I mean, they can't afford to just keep anything to turn around, you know, throwing these big increases again. That's why I think we need to get down to the nuts and bolts. I think there's a lot of things we agree on, but we've got, if you don't get your budget under control, you're not going to see any of this stuff happen. You know, there's some things I know that, that, you know, I suppose, I think quite a few teachers increased teachers this year, and some of them may be made by the state. But what we've been gathering is, yes, they're going to fund it one year, then it's dumped on them later. So there's a kind of things that, you know, that we have got to get under control. And it ain't always just on money, it has.
You know, I certainly agree with what Ruth Laramie has said, but starting with Mr. Barton, I think was important for me because my concern for Nelson County is that... I'm very proud of our school. I'm really proud of what the administration does, what the school board does. And the overarching goal for me is really, really quality oriented. And the board of supervisors doesn't really have much control over that. The board of supervisors, of course, can provide enough funds for the school board and the administration to do those things that they believe and want and prioritize. But the board of supervisors does have the ability to set a tone. And having this meeting is a great thing to do that. Brings us all together and brings us closer. You know, the fact that, that the board supervisors are able to be open to the requests that are made by the schools, and the fact that within our ability, we want to meet those, because I certainly believe that the decisions about where the financial resources are spent is really best made by you all and others. It's our abilities, we have the ability to support you, we have the ability to help make things happen. We don't have the ability to implement them or prioritize them. I know that after the budget is set, there's always a possibility of y'all coming to us with a need and having us address that need fairly immediately. And I do believe the less that we have to do that, the better. Of course, we can't predict. But to give y'all the resources you need to be able to make those decisions as they come up, I think is imperative. I like the fact that money left from your budget at the end of the year can go towards capital. I think that's a really good thing. I know I'm not speaking for everybody on this, but I really do, because it gives you the opportunity to meet the benefits of how you run things up until that time and, and kind of plan for the future. I know you're not asking for things you don't need, but over the course of the year, many decisions are being made by y'all. And at the end of the year, I think that giving you that opportunity to benefit from that, you know, benefit from the decisions that you made, is a good thing. But nothing wrong with that at all. The other thing that the board supervisor has the ability to do in, besides setting a tone, is really communicate directly with leadership about those things that are important. And I think we're doing a good job of doing that.
Thank you. So, first of all, Ms. Ervin, the number that we've got, the projected number for next year, was that the 1507? Okay, that's the state's number? Or is that our? That's our number. So, someone was asking about that, that's what we're projecting as enrollment for next year. So I want to start by, first of all, thanking the board of supervisors for allowing us to roll over money into capital projects from last year. Those are going to be greatly needed projects. You know, one of the things Mr. Rutherford talked about, CTE, and one of the things that has come to our attention is that the greenhouse at the high school is in terrible shape, because it really not much has been done to it since that wing of the school was built. And the glass in it is not even the same. So we're hopeful to use some of that money to rehab that, because that's a very valuable program that serves many, many students. And it's also a safety issue. So, and I also want to thank the board of supervisors and the broadband authority for all of the work and money that has been put into the Firefly Internet program that is going on in the county. And I've said this to a couple of people, I haven't been able to verify this yet, but I think we may be the first county in the state to have wall-to-wall internet availability once this is done, which is an amazing, an amazing feat. I view that as a game changer. I think that is providing internet service, universal availability of internet service to everyone in the county is tantamount to providing electricity to everyone back in the suburbs. I think it's that big of a game changer. I think people may want to move here, to out in the country, if they have the availability of the technology to use, and then take advantage of the scenery. So along those lines, one of the things that, you know, we certainly want to talk about going forward is what does the, what do you all think the population in the county will look like going forward? What should it look like, in your opinion, demographically speaking? Because we're obviously... Because we're obviously interested in how many school-aged children there are here and as far, and also total population. And certainly housing does go along with that. We, we need housing at all levels, honestly, at this point. I mean, we need affordable housing, we need middle-income housing, and we need higher-end housing, which will almost certainly require, you know, subdivisions and things like that. So definitely, I don't know, we'll house on that, but, but we are interested in having that discussion to find out, not, not to drive it, but to find out from you all where you all see us headed. Because we need to be able to plan for those things. I'm very mindful of, you know, looking at some of the reports that we have since, since 2007, the enrollment in the school system has dropped drastically. Also, the state's funding to the school system has dropped drastically. As of right now, state funds look like they're gonna be $8.6 million. 2007, I think they were over $10 million. At the same time, Mr. Harvey, to your point, the county's contribution to the school budget has gone from a little over $10 million at that time to over $15 million at this time, or close to $15 million. I don't have the number exactly in front of me. I would point out the seven and a half, you're 100% right, that's the requirement for the county, but that 7.5 million is to meet the SOQ, the Standards of Quality. And the only thing I would say to that, because I've had this conversation also with, with our people in the school system, is that no one in the state of Virginia funds at the SOQ levels. Now, everybody funds over it, it's a matter of how much over, you know, we need to fund. And those are discussions that we need to have. And I think those can be part of a broader discussion if we can work on a relationship where we can do both. We can work on the budget and what makes the most sense because we don't have taxing authorities, so we come to you all for the money. But at the same time, we could maybe work on with, with a capital improvement committee, subcommittee from both boards, maybe we can work on a long-term plan to fund bigger items. You know, for example, we put a roof on a school, you know, 20 years after that, we're gonna have to put another roof on a school, you know, at that point. And so to, to be able to work on this relationships that we have in that kind of commitment, we are certainly doing everything we can right now to be as, as physically conservative as possible with the, with the school system at, at this time. So, but we do thank you for everything that you all have done for us and continue to do for the kids in this, in this county.
Is increasing your funding based on pupils?
Not solely. I don't think it's solely based on pupils. The formula changed too, didn't it?
Yeah, the composite index is staying to every two years. Can you hear that?
It is. Marking.
Okay. So the composite index is adjusted by the state every two years, so it goes up and down, it's on, invaluable for our property, it's a good driver, that's on. So that is one component. The other component is the economy. It's, Northern Virginia does well. It's an inverse relationship to our composite index, so it's a very valuable component that should be used down. The per pupil amount, we get about $4,600 a day per student, so that if they give drivers and for all of our SOQ funded positions, and they're all funded on a per pupil basis, and so yes, that would be a good driver of the state funds. There are also special projects and things that come through. On occasion, the general simply will approve, for example, a compensation supplement to teachers, and they give raises, and that's an added numbers to the county. Because they don't give raises like they did, maybe this past year, that money's not part of that state budget. They also sometimes have enrollment loss money, so with your enrollment loss, sometimes they hold harness, and so each general simply session would have special components that you have to consider as you look at this thing.
But your raises and things are based on that number that reaches out there that they say we should have and take, not the increase, because they pay on for the ones that are higher. Yeah, and then the others, we intend the 20% salary plus 7% raise. And that's what we gotta be careful with, that stands apart the thing, it's, it's just a thing that it affects about three local counties in the state, the same point, a real negative impact. But on the other hand, what they're telling us is you're getting all those tax dollars from, say, Wintergreen, some of the power plants and stuff like that, so you've got plenty of money, you know. And it, and it's true in a way. But when you look at somewhere like Amherst, who I believe the last time, they take like 20 some percent of the cost of education, and the state pays the rest, and I believe we have been about 50/50, and I think it's sometimes, every now and then it's just the other way, that we're paying more than 50% of our kids' education. But we don't wanna get over a big tax base either.
The state has a count on the composite index at 0.8. I see references of the, some of the law leaders, this is like the Fairfax before, 0.8. So that the state is paying 0.2% of the state, instead of that regulation, I think. Fairfax at one time, one of the even say, you know, most of them, and it will run out of time for this. So that, that top is 0.8.
I don't know, for years, nobody could explain the composite index. They hadn't worked anything else. A bunch of us went to Richmond one time, sat down and arranged with some gentleman, and he definitely explained to us what it was. And what, what you think is, when it's benefiting 98% of the school system, or who's gonna be able to pull them up to screw with it? And what we always ask for is an exception to the rule. Let us play that case on why we don't think this is right, but don't change everybody else's mistake. Just make it, you know, where we can get some kind of help, it is yet to happen.
I mean, Tommy, you were talking about composite indexes. Amherst's composite index is coming here as 0.3141, Nelson's is 0.5674, so the board really, you know, unfortunately, in communities like us, does fall back on the local authority to, to fund that difference. And, you know, as a board, that's not, we can't do anything about that, we can adjust. And you were talking about teaching positions, we've netted a loss of over 20 teaching positions since 2014 to try to right-size it down to, you know, the loss of student population. So, you know, as a board and as a central office, I think they're working hard to right-size that, but at the end of the day, we can't control that composite index and the responsibilities that the local, the local government has in supplementing that stuff. I hear what you're saying.
I don't know, we enchanted, what can a tax base hold? I mean, that's, that's a thing, would it more and more retired people?
And that's a part of that strategic planning, I think we all were really interested in, is how do we, you know, the school system, how do we draw more kids in, from a strategic standpoint? As a community, what can we do to, right, like you're saying, to transition, have a better balance potentially between retirees and families of school-aged kids? And it's way more complex and way more complicated than what I can do, but it certainly impacts, as a board, you know, what, as a school board, what we can expect in the coming days from, from student population.
The other, the other side of that equation, we also have to keep in mind too, is while that increase in family growth absolutely helps student enrollment, it helps you all, it also puts pressure on the infrastructure of everything else we have. And so how do we balance that growth with getting some other tax base, whether it's small business or industry or something, because if we just become heavy in residential, yeah, we're gonna have a lot of kids to educate, but yeah, we're gonna have a lot of kids to educate. And, and I know that brings in income from the state, and that's a help, but it's also a burden without the other component. And that's the balance that, that we need to, to work on, and some of the things that we've talked about as a board, some opportunities we have on them, and, and how to attract that, not just the residential growth, you know, the, we talked about the internet and how that's gonna attract families and their wealth. Before to attract families, the first thing it's gonna do is keep people, leave them, hopefully, and then also start to eventually, when people learn, attract them. But to attract them, we also have something for them to do. We don't want them just to live here and go to Lynchburg and Charleston to work. We need to be able to keep them here, we need to attract people who wanna live here because of a job that's, that's a community. So it's, I mean, it's like the spinning plates, I'm trying to balance everything.
Yeah, I mean, I got Mr. Rutherford and Mr. Barton, and then it's our turn.
I mean, back and forth, you know, with smaller amount of students, but primary thing that draws parents with children is quality of education. And, but, you know, it's a mixed bag, because of what you stated, but the quality of education is what draws people to your community. And, yeah, we have to work, all these things are true. I mean, you know, you, you want to, you wanna make education affordable, but you also wanna make it better, or as good as you can make it. And really, I don't know if this is appropriate time to talk about this, but it really comes down to the teacher, who provides the service to the city. And a lot of my ex-students are teachers in the school system. And almost all of them called me up and at one point, they said, "Mr. Barton, I'm in terrible time. I'm having a terrible time, it's not working." And I would say to them, "Good." Because if you can go into a classroom right away and be a good teacher, your expectations, expectations are so ridiculously low, you'll be a lousy teacher. And, and that's, and, and, and they said, "Well, I don't know." And I said, "Well, the only thing that really matters about teaching is this, and you have to be honest with yourself. Do you like the students? Do you love the students? If you do, you'll find a way to become a good teacher." And, and, and being a good teacher is, you can, you can help teachers. I'm gonna tell a story, I'm sorry, I, I, I tell a story.
Mr. Barton? Um, Mr. Rutherford?
He says, okay, no, go ahead.
So, Mr. Reed, I know Mr. Rutherford would like to speak with Mr. Barton, since that's what he gets.
So, everybody's talking about money's here, money's there, we compare ourselves to Amherst here. We compare ourselves to Amherst, we compare ourselves to Alamo, and all of the funding that they get or don't get. That they have industry, they have business, they have subdivisions, they are doing all these things to help their infrastructure and help their tax base. I grew up here, I traveled to work. My son is the only one in my household that works in the county. So every, when I was in high school, Mr. Norris referred Nelson as a bedroom community, and we had not changed. And that was back in '83, '84. We had not changed anything. If anything has changed, the industry that we did have is now gone. So we're not, as a group or as a county, we're not trying to get that tax base in from where I can see it. Then we wouldn't have to come to you, and the monies we asked out for wouldn't be as big if we had a bigger tax base and money was able to be distributed around as needed. Everybody's said the same thing. This list has been the same since I've been on the board. Some of these things are needs, some of these things are safety issues. We're not trying to create anything but a safe environment for the schools, we try to be competitive with our salaries and all those things. We're not asking you to make this some conglomerate school that we can then draw from other states. We just want the best education in the county, and then we can compare ourselves with surrounding the county. That's all we are asking. I know some of these numbers are big, but we are trying to, as a board, look at these things and try to help each other so we can get these things dialed down to where we can come to y'all with a reasonable number. So we won't have to listen to, you know, y'all are asking for too much money. You know, the salaries of where, we try to be competitive. That's all we're trying to do. And we're trying to make the best learning environment for these kids and the adult learning in this county.
Thank you, Caesar, I appreciate your comments, and that's gonna help lead into what some of the comments I have to say. You know, I wanna address some of the earlier comments from the chairman of the school board as it pertains to where we see ourselves go. You know, I think a fact, and early indicators are supporting this, Nelson County is, has a stagnant population. The biggest issue we see is it's a demographic swap. We have an aging demographic, as Mr. Harvey had mentioned. We are a retiree community, and it's being amplified, obviously, in areas that have a higher tax base, you know, and create that, but they don't bring the things that are important to a thriving community, and that's children, you know. And having, obviously, that impact is, is lack of state funding that comes with that. You know, when we talk about, you know, the comparisons of Amherst to Nelson, you know, obviously, there are a lot of similarities, and there are some major differences. As it pertains to subdivisions and whatnot, Nelson County is no rubber. We have no major subdivisions coming, we have no major affordable areas where people can have that, only $900 a month rental property, you know. Those things are few and far between, and those are what allow a working-class person to live in a community like ours. Otherwise, they're dependent on family support and, and, or they get into the small inventory of rental properties, which is very small and almost nonexistent. You know, when we, when we look at the future of Nelson County, it's, it's scary in a way, you know. We don't have major supply increases. We have stagnant, if not lost, increase in housing. We, obviously, the, the internet question is an amazing one. Do I think that will increase our population slightly? But the biggest indicator of an increase in population is increase in supply. Otherwise, all you're doing is replacing a household that once used to have a family with another house, with another family into that household, which isn't an increase, it's just maintaining what you got, which is important. And I think it's important that we preserve those who live in Nelson County and try to keep them from leaving as Mr. Parsons, you know, that's critical. We owe it to our people to do that. And, you know, obviously, education is a critical piece, but we as a Board of Supervisors and School Board have to start getting aggressive. We have to start looking at these things as not just inconveniences, but crises. You know, the affordable housing situation is a crisis. The internet, lack of internet availability was a crisis, and we treated it like one, and guess what we did? We got it done. And it's important we start looking at these things and treat them that way. And I, I believe that these conversations, as opposed to us doing this every year, going back and forth about, "No, it's you, it's you, it's this county, look at this county," we've gotta sit down and have this conversation of what we see it to look like. I do see and want Skylar to be a thriving neighborhood community like it used to be. As of right now, it is a struggling community with the, with the average median income that is like near $30,000, which has been pottered, you know. And we look at other things like infrastructure, as David mentioned. Yes, when we look at increasing these things, increasing population, well, we have to look at infrastructure, you know. And that's a huge dollar number. Just ask Mr. Reed or I when we sit on the cert authority board, you know, those numbers are not affordable. So we have got to start looking at these things and treat them as such a crisis. How do we attract industry? My answer is career technical education. You can't attract people here until you have a population that can work. That's a fact. And you can't attract the people that can, you can't attract the population here so long as you don't have houses for them to live. We have to look at these things because they're all interconnected and all the struggles that we have. And of course, a, a high-quality education is, is an important thing. And I just wanna say one thing that's very important, and I hope we can echo this to our state rep- And I just wanna say one thing that's very important, and I hope we can echo this to our state representatives. The Commonwealth has failed you, and they failed us. They've made it to where a struggling community like ours have to figure out a composite index of point five-six, a number that not many counties have to deal with, and create a war zone between the school board and the board of supervisors when they're the ones who create these mandates that are unfunded, and then all of a sudden, somebody's trying to figure out who's gonna foot the bill, when in fact, it was them who made the rule. And that is a frustration that we've always carried, and I hope that we can continue to echo our, 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 uh, our upsetness with our representatives on that, so I couldn't pick a better word. Other than that, you know, I think I agree with Mr. Chief. We need to start looking at these things and asking ourselves, "Where is Nelson County gonna be?" as opposed to, "Where is Nelson County at today?" I'll tell you where it's at today. It's those things that I just mentioned.
What plan? This one?
This one. All the things I mentioned prior. That's the struggle we're in.
I totally agree. I think, you know, and it's like the dog that biting its own tail, you know, where you start with a circle like that. And I, I mean, right here is a great place. We all wanna talk to each other more. Um, there is a planning document, I think, that's we're supposed to be doing every five years or something like that. I don't know if we've done it in a while. And, you know, where we can get the public involved as well, because I think that that, that voice is, is important to hear. Um, and I agree with you too, to, you know, that we need to talk to Richmond about as many times as we can, you know. I'm gonna call them all the time. I usually talk about pipeline stuff, but I'm starting on education and then housing too, you know, because now, now housing is my middle name now. And so I agree with you wholeheartedly, and you know that I know what goes on in this county. And it's, it's a two-sided thing, you know what I mean? We have the on-one-fifty-one, we've got, you know, the service economy that seems to be thriving very well, but nobody can afford to live over there, who work there. So they all live in, you know, other regions and move and drive in, you know. So then again, we don't get the benefit of their lives, people living, you know, living here. It doesn't really help us because these people are making, what, ten dollars an hour, something like that. You know, they're, they're struggling as well. You know, I mean, we've been in a county here, people, you know, you get two acres of your dad's place and you can put your house there, and, and that's a huge deal. And people can live on thirty thousand dollars if they don't have a mortgage. But, you know, we gotta look at where we put people. I, I remember somebody told me one time that their kids had to move away to live their lives. And maybe if they were, you know, they did it well, they could come back and retire here. So, I mean, it's, it's a, you know, you don't want your kids to leave. You want your kids to, you know, live and grow and have grandbabies here so you don't have to travel to see them and get through it. But, so.
I'd like to interject a couple of numbers, if I could, um, into the conversation. So, Mr. Perkins had, um, made some comments about, um, what we were trying to do, and he was a hundred percent right. And we have to be competitive, uh, within our region to get people. And so last year, uh, some of us started looking at what the composite index said about the county. So if we use that as a barometer, um, the composite index, uh, we have the twenty-sixth, at least last year, we had the twenty-sixth strongest composite index in the state of Virginia. So by that standard, we would want to be, you know, at least twenty-sixth on funding. We wanna be running salaries about that. But we also have to bear in mind that we have to compete with people in our region. And the two biggest players in our region are the city of Charlottesville and Alamo County. That's who we have to compete with for teachers. So just a little food for thought. Um, in Nelson, for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, for starting salary, we rank eighth in the, in the state, which is great. That helps us attract new teachers, okay? But that salary remains the same for the first ten years, up through, up through the end of year nine. So by the end of year five, with five years' experience, that moves to fourteenth. And with a, a little increase from forty-eight, four-eleven to a thousand-dollar increase, we go from fourteenth or eighth in the beginning to when they have fifteen years' experience, they are at twenty-fourth, highest in the state. But then after that, it starts dropping off, okay? When you get teachers, good seasoned teachers, that have fifteen years' experience, the ones in the Virginia retirement system that I joked of, you can't get out of the system after fifteen years because of the end, as far as the retirement. But the salary goes up about twelve-hundred dollars between year ten and year fifteen is all it goes up. And that drops us to forty-seventh in the state. By year twenty, we're fifty-sixth in the state. By year twenty-five, we're seventy-third in the state. And by the time our teachers reach retirement age with a bachelor's degree, they're ninety-five-fifth out of a hundred and thirty-two school districts in the state of Virginia. So one of our goals has been to try to get everyone, all of the pay scales, around the twenty-fifth. But like most businesses, if you view this as a business, our salaries account for a little over eighty-one percent of our total budget. Um, and, and unfortunately, the, the math is, is messed when it comes to schools. You know, if we lose a hundred kids, does that mean that we lose, you know, three school buses? No, not necessarily, because they don't come from places where we have just, you know, it's not a school bus load, three school bus loads of kids, okay? Same goes with, with losing enrollment for teachers. Um, and to, to what Mr. Rutherford was saying, um, I think, and Tommy, I, when was the first big comprehensive plan done? Was it oh-three, oh-four? Something like that?
Eighty-two or three.
Well, the big redo, that, that, that was the one that was so thick, the big redo.
There was no big redo. It's just something you make a little mind change to because I didn't share.
Well, no, about fifteen years ago, that was one that was put up, it was about eight hundred pages to start, and then it got trimmed down.
And I think they filled up this room.
What's that?
I think they filled up this room at the public hearing too.
Well, right. But at, at any rate, my point is, it's been very successful because what it's resulted in is a tourism-based economy. We've got an excellent tourism-based economy. Unfortunately, we don't have anywhere for you to invest in state. And, uh, you know, and there's nowhere else for the people to spend their money. Um, I'm all for, uh, seeing jobs come in. I think Mr. Rutherford is right. I think we need to have skilled workers, whatever the job that you're trying, whatever the industry is you're trying to bring in. They're gonna wanna know what your skilled workforce is for that industry, whether you're looking for CPAs or welders or whatever you're looking for. Um, so I think that would be good. I think we are, we are definitely tied together. Um, in doing this, we want the best education that we can, we can provide for the money available. And so we want to have, we wanna turn kids out of our school system that are able to go and succeed and hopefully stay here, but can succeed in any field that they in depth, whether they wanna get a four-year college degree or, or higher, or whether they wanna take the CTE route, or whether they wanna be self-employed, or whether they wanna go in the military. Um, so that's what we all want. And, and so I like these conversations because we can, we can, um, you know, continue working together on them. But I think, just like with the broad board, and I think we need to, you know, we need to, we would love to be able to have that conversation of where are we gonna be? Where, where do you guys see us in, in five years, ten years, twenty years? Um, what kinds of things are happening? Because the tax base is tough. I know it's tough in a rural community because, you know, we've got a rural, uh, maybe not all agricultural community anymore, but it's still pretty significant, and we have land use, which takes off the taxes and things like that, which you have to do because it's a rural area. Um, so anyway, I, I just wanted to interject some of those numbers, um, and just to show you what we're trying to do. And there are certainly unfunded mandates at the state and the federal level that we can't do much about on, on those things. There's a bunch of them. Uh, so one of my first questions when I got on the board was, I remember when I was a kid, how many people were in the school board office? But everything has changed since then. Um, all of these federal requirements that have to be done, and they send the rules down, but they don't send any money to go with the rules.
Mr. Parker, Rutherford, you want it?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, Mr. Barton, any other score on that?
I agree with everything you said. Housing is a problem, employment is a problem, all those things. The things that I was addressing, however, had to do with what you talked about, the quality of education. Can you improve the quality of education without spending more money? And the key to that is the teachers. And the key to, look, when a, a teacher stays in teaching, the reason a teacher is a teacher is because there's incredible joy. It is a, something that one does which one would never give up. A good teacher would never become a, uh, a supervisor or administrator. Teaching is, look, right now in Nelson County, teachers are hurting because the energy that they get is from the students. From every morning going to class and whatever happened the night before, those students are there and they energize you. They make you strong. You, to your teachers, you have got to treat them as professionals. You've got to get away from the, you know, the, the unattended consequences of, of, of the testing has really hurt teachers. You know, this COVID thing, it's hurt teachers. Teachers need to, to, to be creative. They need to respect being professionals. You know, it's not just teachers, in this whole society. We don't, we, we, we find professionals don't take responsibility for what they do. We have to make, you know, teaching Nelson County is an incredible experience, and people stay here for a long time. You know, you talk about the bad, you know, the way, you know, you, you attract teachers by spending a lot of money, you know. You need to make teachers feel that they are important parts of the community. And you don't do that by dictating what they're teach, how they're gonna teach it, what hour, and all those things. You need to show respect for them. Now, teaching is a community thing. You know, whether it's the, the, the parents of the children, or the children, or the teachers themselves. We have perfect-sized schools in our community. They're perfect, three hundred people is a perfect-sized school for, for a, uh, uh, grammar school, primary school. What an opportunity this is. We, we, we can do this thing. And, 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 and everything is connected. Good schools will bring more people, you know, and, and that's the thing, that's what I wanna make. It's what I wanna accomplish in this meeting, is to make you, make everyone appreciate what, how important teachers are to whatever you're talking about.
Yeah, I appreciate your comment, Skip. And one of the things I will say is we have some amazing teachers here. Um, we also have amazing staff. We also have amazing bus drivers. We also have amazing food administrators. We also have amazing, I could go on and on and on. It takes a village to run a school. And I think, I think we have all agreed that we are here to try to do what is in the best interest of Nelson County, what is in the best interest of our students. And I'm thinking we can all agree that it's probably time to maybe either put away the old strategic plan and create a new strategic plan together as two boards, because we're recognizing what one needs affects the other needs. And if we can start to work on that together, then I think we'll get the bigger. Um, I also wanted to point out, um, someone at some point was talking about, um, the teachers and a number of teachers. And I think it was, um, Ms. Rothgat that pointed out the number of teachers that we have lost. Um, our school administration, and I certainly wanna point out that Shannon Urban who does amazing work when it comes to get creative and how we are going to work with a little bit of staffing that we do have. Um, some of the things that they have looked at, the educational levels of our teachers, they have doubled up some of the responsibilities of individuals. They have, uh, we have individuals that have stepped up into roles. So I think we have gotten as creative as any county has gotten. And I think that is something that needs to be highlighted because I agree with you, Skip. It does, you know, teaching starts from the heart, and that's what we have here in Nelson. We have teachers that understand the importance of taking care of students. And I think our job is to make sure that we create an environment that allows those students to succeed, but not just the students, but the teachers to succeed. And, and just as Mr. Perkins had said earlier, that's all we're looking for. Um, a lot of the things on the capital improvement, I, I for one cannot wait until that slate gets wiped clean so that we can start working on the things that really matter, um, working on the things that will help our students. Um, someone over there had mentioned about the CTE. That's critical. That is critical now more than ever because it is the skills that are gonna be needed out of this pandemic to move things forward. And those are the types of things we need to focus on. So I look forward again to an opportunity for us to dust off or create a brand-new strategic plan, and then we do that together. Um, I look forward to the opportunity to start thinking about and start talking about the, the things that matter to our students and to our teachers.
I, I just want to add, that is pragmatic. That's a pragmatic way of looking at things. There's nothing idealistic about, about making an environment for teaching and for students and for that, that relationship to blossom and to grow. I mean, not that it's not there. Don't get me wrong. I don't think it's not there, but I think it needs, it's been injured. It's been wounded.
I, I appreciate that. I echo what Mr. Jones said. You know, one of the things that we're challenged with, with not only the, the yearly operations at the school, it's, you know, we keep kind of that, kind of the capital improvement information. You know, Jesse, I know it's been really important to how you're, you're part of, and as a board, one of the things we're charged with when we look at, at those capital improvements or those monies that are left over at the end of the year, is do we reinvest in those direct student, hands-on educational things like the welding? Or do we have to take care of the safety concerns? Things like video cameras on the bus or even buses. We got a report recently on buses in that operation, and you would be appalled if you saw the age of the majority of their school buses. So we want to get to those hands-on CTE investments, capital improvement-type investments. Our challenges from a safety standpoint, we can't ever settle enough to get to that point. Um, and those things like the buses, the, it was, Caesar, it was the Bollards, Ballards, we talked about last time. We need things that impact student safety every day in the board. We're committed to not just education, but education in a safe environment.
Thank you.
One of the things, I mean, we, we talked about is the quality of education. But there's things you can talk about, why there's the quality of life in Nelson County. And that's why we have the people that come in here is because of the quality of life. And if you tell me we're doing subdivisions and all that stuff, you cannot show anywhere on paper where increasing school kids, it will be good for the county. It's gonna cost you money. If an average child comes in, we're paying per school. If they've got two kids, you're losing big money. So instead of trying to bring in more kids, it's, I'm not saying it's not the answer, but I mean, it, it costs us money, especially in our situation where our composite index is so high and, you know. And that's one thing that helps us so much is where our biggest tax base is, they have no kids. Now, that's the reason that's so beneficial. Uh, I think you probably have heard a few kids coming out of Wounded that, uh, but, you know, it, it's a two-sided soul. If you wanna do all this growth and everything, I have never been in favor of growth because it does not pay for itself. So you just gotta figure out where you want your quality at. I mean, when you're quality of life, I mean, the Rockfish Valley has gotten so bad now. It's, the quality of life is really hurting. I'm always getting complaints up and complaints about the traffic, you can't get it on the road. We don't need any more development in Rockfish Valley. Y'all can have anybody you want in the county. We need to relieve some of that pressure over there and put it on.
and put it on 29 and some other locales to build Skyline, build up some of these other areas that, which you've got to do things and promote things that makes people want to come here. Now, the internet is going to be a big thing because before it was only in certain places and now that's going to be everywhere. So that's a tool that we can use that is good for it all, but the financial market home and that kind of thing. But, you know, my growth is not always a positive thing. Increasing your kids in school is not going to be a positive thing. You go back and look what it costs to count and stuff to put people to educate their child. And see these people come in and say, well, I don't have any kids in school. Well, if you ever had any kids, somebody paid for that education. And that's your turn to take that on your turn. But it's not an easy answer and growth is not the answer, I don't think.
And I would say, I don't know that we are, as a board, pro or anti-growth, either one. We have to take our cues from you all as a board because you all are going to set the policy within the county that's going to determine what the population is and what the demographics of that population are. You know, we know that, I mean, we completely understand that. We would just like to have the conversation to find out, where are we headed? Are we going to continue downward trending like we are now for the next five years, 10 years? We're, as a board, we have to deal with whatever comes our way. We just want to be in the conversation so we know what to expect. I guess is what I'm saying.
Something that Mr. Paul may be talking about. Young couples are not having kids anymore. I mean, that's where you saw that. So if you get more young couples, that's not going to solve your problem you got.
Yeah, you know, I, I think, you know, we can discuss this in many different shades. I do think an action item that I would support as of right now is the capital improvement joint board. As a, and I think a two-on-two would be a great, great combination. So, Mr. Chairman, whenever that time does come appropriate, that is something I'd like to approach. The second thing that I, that when we talk about the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, that's a $100,000 experience for the local government. And it takes, Steve, what, it'll take a year, two years to do it effectively? Because essentially you have to, essentially you have to go through the planning commission in many different aspects of it. Then it becomes to us, then it goes, you know, obviously you'll have some commentary. So, you know, but we can do some immediate strategic plan and immediate goals for the board. And I think, you know, the comprehensive plan needs to happen. It's something that I think when me and Ernie got on, we voted to do it and it was a major undertaking. We had staff changes and it got on the backboard. And hopefully in the future, that's something we can address as a board. And of course, including you all in the conversation. But I think that joint comprehensive group can facilitate some of those conversations, you know, and those two-on-two meetings. You know, I think we could have them as a big group like this. I think some of the two-on-two meetings are going to be a little bit better and easier to facilitate. But in terms of the capital improvement, I think an action item that I'd support and I hope we can get done today is doing that joint committee. So that would look like two and two with staff.
And I want to do this one with.
In the light of me, Tommy?
The only way the comprehensive plan works is when you get there, when you get through this comprehensive plan, you've got to follow it up by some, if you don't zone according to the comprehensive plan, because the time you get there, you start telling Ernie that, Ernie, we're going to make your place where then you'll be working less. We're going to downsize you, but yet we're going to go with George right down the street here and make his real bad.
Comprehensive plans have no strength, no teeth.
But if you don't follow it up by zoning and stick with it, then it won't leave.
Of course.
And I have never seen a comprehensive plan pulled off from a shelf once put there since I've been on the board. The only few cases will be if somebody thinks there's something in there and they can cut up, pull something, and use that right after it's done and after that. How many times have you seen that comprehensive plan been pulled from a shelf?
Maybe a couple, here they get some traps.
Traps, yeah.
And it's just a shame to spend that kind of money, but it's all, safety law requires you to do it every, every six months. Suppose you do it every five years, it's, you know, extra. Yeah, and it's very expensive.
Anyone from the school board want to weigh in on any other topics?
I'm really, I think that we should move ahead with the CIP team. And I think we should assign people to that, right? So that it's not like floating, people should be on the committee. And the two-by-twos can be, maybe we can take turns doing that, right? Isn't that the intention? Kind of asking and telling that it's not going to be the same two people that meet every single time. Like sometimes it'll be, you know, me and Caesar and Tommy and David Carr and sometimes it'll be a mixture of other people. But we need to be transparent about with me and everyone so that, you know, nothing's going on that nobody else doesn't know about. I mean, a double legged in there.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's important to build relationships, that we have that location of the two-by-two. The two-by-two should just be an informal get-together and, you know, have a few specific business items and then just talk. You know, I think that's important, just to build a relationship and reinforce it. I like the idea of assigning the other committee, just having two from each board assign. I don't think that's necessarily, y'all might not agree with this, but I think maybe the two chairs should discuss it and make your appointments as chairman from your board. appoint two people to that. You don't necessarily have to decide a day because I think that is such an important group that we don't want to just assign somebody today and they not be committed to that. I think it's something that Ernie, you should talk to us and get feedback. And George, you should say, and assign those people because they're going to not float, you know. I think that's a great idea.
And maybe they should have a term, so.
This could be a yearly term.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know.
And I would also ask that you not necessarily look at somebody and think that they're very skilled in construction and therefore should be on the committee.
One question that I would have would be timing because I know you're dealing with your budget right now, Steve, more or less. We'll be looking at ours within four or five, six days. Do we have time to put this in, to implement this sooner instead of later?
I don't see how it's, I think it's just another thing that we do on a regular basis. I don't think that we should delay it because of budget, because budget, it's all, I mean, when do we not have budget? It starts in July and it ends in June.
Well, and I think we could, I think sooner is better than later. So I think the sooner we can put that committee together and it can get together and need, the better off everyone will be because we'll all know what we're talking about. That's. And truly, I think the committee will gather from two different standpoints. The short-term, immediate, let's get this thing going. It's, y'all need, let's get four people together next week and do something, you know, start talking about this budget. And then also knowing that there's going to be another budget as soon as this one's closed out, working towards that long-term, ongoing conversation. But let's not go into this and say, okay, well, we're in a budget. Let's wait till June. No, we're in a budget, let's get it done next week. And same, piggybacking on something you said, George, about the topics we addressed and you mentioned, you know. Basically saying, you know, it's our role to look long-term and help you all solve your income issue and the budget issue. And I get that, that's true. We've got to look at that as a short-term and a long-term thing as well. You know, we also, we need to understand that right now, we have $800,000 we've got to figure out. That's today. We also have 20 years from now. We've got 1507 that we've got to address, or whatever that number was, 1507. You know, those are two, same type of conversation. $800,000 shortfall this year, student enrollment dropping. The proposed 1,507 is where, that's the number I'm getting at. That's a long-term picture, something we need to address long-term. How can we do something as a county to not only bring in the students that are going to cause a financial strain in, you know, the infrastructure, but what can we do to offset that? Like I said earlier, with some tax breaks to go with it. That's a long-term, well, you know, long-term responsibility. Short-term, we got to address the $800,000, you know. So we need to look, it's not just one side, but it's all, there's a couple of things that we, that we all need to work together to accomplish.
I'm done. Anyone else on the school board?
Well, I just think, you know, if we can, you know, we're just two legs of the table that need, you know. We understand that you fund more than the school. We understand that you fund law enforcement, you fund the service authority. We understand all of those things. So like I said before, we're not asking you to just fund us, but fund the community and grow the community so we can all grow together. That's what we're looking for. We're not trying to just sweep and have, we would like something done that can help the community as a whole.
The one thing we don't really see though, and I think we don't have to change our policy on that, that total fund because this year, a lot of funds that go, and it wasn't because we saved, it was probably didn't spend. And I think that's probably more than twice what that number normally is. And what, and that's distorted by the fact that, you know, we didn't have in-school, we didn't have busing, we didn't have all of this. So you just got to keep that in mind. It's got to be a $400,000 left over every year. And the other thing is, you can't turn in a budget with no interest. I guess Ward might have to do that. And he had before. We've had years where it's been, you know, totally out of fund. And, you know, if the county could be able to do anything other than maintain exactly what we've got, someone's got to give somewhere, because a $800,000 increase, the county response, and the school board has a very many of them.
So it's like, so we moved into the, what are we going to do stage of things, I think. And so we're looking at two things that are really pretty basic. One of them is the capital improvement committee. Two members from each board. I think George and I could poll our members and see who's interested in doing that. You know, get two people from each and then get those folks together. And as soon as they can get together, we can do that. We also have, you know, the two-by-twos, which the other members of both boards would have an opportunity to do. That would leave George and myself to be, perhaps, might propose, not on either of those. And that would give us the opportunity to lead with them, get what's back and be apprised of what's going on. I don't know if that suits you or not, but it would seem that that might be an equitable way to move forward and let those two teams then determine an agenda so they can get moving on.
So that the four remaining members do the two-by-twos, is that what you're saying?
Right, so we'd have two each on the, on the capital committee. We have two of the two-by-twos and you'd have us.
Well, the two-by-twos, I'm hopeful, and I think what I'm hearing from our board is that we would, we would like to mix that up some so that we can develop relationships amongst board members from opposite boards. You know, have more informed conversations about this.
Perhaps initially we could do that between, you know, there'd be three on each side, including us. Maybe we could have two sets of them in different combinations.
We can't do three because that's.
No, I mean, we could have, we could have two different combinations, two-by-twos with those three. And, you know, that would take us up to, you know, you know, two, you know, three months down, two, three months down.
Right, that is a good start.
Any comments on, anybody, on that or ideas or?
I think that's.
I think let's lock it down.
And so each, each board will be meeting the regular meeting next week, correct? Correct? We'll meet next Thursday, well, next Tuesday. So in the meantime, we could maybe select the CIP committee members between now and the next board, our next board meetings and then you would have to get in touch with each other about.
Right. Let, let me know which one of those you'd rather do, the two-on-two or the committee people. And then.
Kind of do the two-by-two and if you're on the committee, I mean. Well, they're, they're separate, right? Only, yeah, only a couple of you are only going to be doing CIP.
Yeah, the CIP committee.
It's only too consistent.
That would be established.
Yes.
But being a member of that doesn't keep you from being more.
It'll keep that, yeah, yeah, it doesn't stop you from doing. I think we all have enough time to juggle, fit it in.
Yeah, but the initial two-on-two can be the two.
Yeah, the committee, exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. And we can work, you know, we can each come up with our perspective, or we can come up with some type of frequency or scheduling for, for that and then get back in touch with each other and work that out.
The other thing I think we heard at the beginning of the evening was that people wanted to, maybe us as boards have a commitment of how often we might want to do this. So as we were, I was like, maybe wrapping things up. How often do we want to meet and make that commitment to one another?
I've always felt that this, this big, this meeting, I've always felt it should be twice a year. At minimum, I mean, it's hard for everybody together, but I do think two times a year is important for us to get together. And I would say going forward that we should develop, this was great, that we've had this open exchange of ideas and thoughts, but I think going forward, we should probably nail down a couple of specific high points of, you know, specific items that we want to leave. Those, the two boards we want to address together.
I think they have come from, if we do the two-by-two and the committee, that, that, those things will come together.
Yep.
I don't, I mean, I just think, you know, maybe three times a year, you know, so we can, that's a well-rounded number so we don't, you know, lose focus on where we are. You know, every six months, then we got that one in the middle where we can still branch out from and feed from. You know, if we do one in July, right after the budget comes out, and then do another one in September and then, you know, December and January, you know, and that area is all going to be about budget and CIP stuff. So, you know, just something to kind of be a food for thought going out to the next two weeks.
So perhaps the two of us can get together after we've talked our thing. And by next week, propose, you know, a date and then you might get started on that and project how often.
Sounds good.
I just want to go back to one last comment. Until the school board gets that budget under control, something we can afford it, I think you wish your time going forward. Nobody can sit there and tell them the same thing as the law is out there if we don't have any funds to help you do anything with. So.
Well, that is something we're definitely going to be discussing going forward. So I can't make you any guarantees right here because there's a lot of factors at play, but we're definitely going to be discussing that.
Fight is, what's going to happen when you go back to school? Then we're going to know the reality. But you don't have a clue what the reality will be yet. We know what we think is going to happen, but, I mean, a lot of these chances of putting kids in other schools and things, if they're satisfied, why would they come back to Nelson? And I love my school system.
Mr. Hart, that makes a good point. And I know we all know this, that there are a slew of question marks ahead of us about what things are going to look like and what. and what kind of demands are going to be on our resources going forward. And that is a good reason, I think, to support what we proposed here because y'all are going to have to be able to be flexible enough to respond to that as it comes up. And we can support you in that. And knowing that we've had good communication leading up to it and as it's going on, so that y'all feel like you can do what you feel like you have. And I think that's, you know, the best we can do at this point is to know that we've got good communication, you've got support, and the, you know, Mr. Harper, Ms. Irwin, in terms of the money, we have two of the best people in the business doing what they're doing in terms of finances. I think we've got maybe even an enviable team of people to be able to deal with what's going to be coming up, whatever.
But also should be known that the experience of going to Nelson County Schools has been wonderful with so many students, it continues to be. And the schools continue to attract people because it's a wonderful place for them to go. And then you can make it better. I mean, just attitude of the teachers who feel that you, you know, there's great joy in teaching them, and it was a great joy teaching Nelson County. And that will not be lost if we continue to see education as being really important for all our children, you know, and we have the attitude that all the children are people thinking for themselves. I mean, that, it's just, it's, this is a good place for them. The only if we have to raise taxes, maybe we will have to raise taxes.
Oh, no.
I mean, it's really going to.
I just said that because no one would ever say that to me.
Tommy, one of the things that you just said really probably did see that there are a lot of question marks coming through. There's no doubt, there are a ton of question marks whether kids will come back, whether they won't. But at the end of the day, we know that schools are more in kind of a brunt of burdened responsibility through this entire pandemic with the kids. And we know that when we get those kids back in school, whether it's the end of this year, whether it's the beginning of next year, whatever that is, we've got kids that are going to come back with probably a lot of out health, emotional issues, social issues, there are going to be some academic catch-ups. So whatever budget we're working on, there's not going to be a budget proposed. We have a proposed budget, but we have not, we don't make a submitted budget this time. We're going to have to take into account a lot of the work that those students are going to need from a social, emotional standpoint, from catching them up academically. And whatever we present, and that presentation comes, will be with that in mind, that we've got a lot of work to do to help these kids get not only back to where they need to be, but back in the same place. So I just, I hope you all will keep that in mind when you work with the budget. But that is the, I think that is the one given we have for next year in that budget, is if we're going, these kids are going to need that.
Well, the failure is not with the school system, not with their teachers. The failure is with the parents. If you can train the damn parents to be responsible and take the interest in their kids' education, but I think you're going to have some kids who will, you lose for the whole year. I don't think anybody you can bring in back now and have them successful because they don't have the life, they're not home.
And I mean, we don't, we don't have the control over that. What we do is we, we manage the kids systematically once they get there. And so, you know, that's why I just say, I, I hope when you look at whatever that budget looks like, just know that we're, I don't want to say we compensate by means, but we're helping to support those kids in a way that we can.
Yeah, just to echo that, we do not have control over that. But what our job is, is to meet people where they're at and to get them where we want them to be. And that's what our, these two boards will do, that we will work together and get our children where they need to be.
Yeah, when those students come back to school, make them know that they're important. And the teachers are important, you know, and, and that's part of what, that is pragmatic. That's a pragmatic view, value unit. Works.
Okay, if, if no one else has anything to add on the topics that we've discussed, Mr. Chairman, we're ready to move to final comments, right? Okay, so for our board, we're going to start from the outside and work our way in. So would you all like to go first or?
Mr. Harper. You haven't had much to say for a while, have you?
Yeah, no, I just, this has been awesome meeting. I mean, what a great first step, this final meeting at the end of this, this is just the start, so thank you all. I think this has been very productive.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
I appreciate everybody taking time. Thank you for letting me be a part of this. It's been good and informational, but most importantly, I appreciate the respect both sides showed one another in coming to the table this first time. And I look forward to what I hope will be lots of great work in the future. And unlike Mr. Harvey, not wanting to be part of that.
Mr. Harvey. I'm a guy who doesn't have. Then he, you know, no sit, he's sitting here and just trying to make everything look good, but it doesn't look good. And we'd like to be able to work together. Anybody that thinks this board, the two by twos, have been very cautious to the school system in the last twenty, thirty years. Look at what we have. But we don't do what we can.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm, I'm just excited that this, again, the meeting has actually taken place. I'm more excited that if we just might get some dates on your calendar for future meetings. What I hope is that those dates will remain and that we do remain focused as two boards to meet together and to spend time together, working on not only what our students need, but what our county wants. So I look forward to being a part of that.
Thank you.
Do I always have to say this? You know, everybody always, you know, I would come here, the students are the most important and all that. And many times, people, they live service to that. But children is, is really what we live for. And, and all of us, when we, you know, it just, and, and we do the best we can. And, 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 and just, it can be done, it can be done. Children can be inspired if they feel safe. And I'm not talking about, you know, if they feel loved, you know, it can, it works. And that, you know, schools can, 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 and, and, and it makes the teachers feel so good, all those things. It's. Whatever.
Mr. Parker.
I don't really have anything to say to add to this either, except for thanks for, you know, putting this together. You guys did a great job. It was, it's always great to see your charming faces. I got to watch that Panny meeting on YouTube the other day after that.
I can see a smile on my face.
I know what you're doing, Tommy, all the time, I can see it. But it was really interesting to watch you guys, you know, have your relaxed meeting together. I appreciate you two more than you guys might believe. But anyway, thank you very much. This is going to be super productive, one thing, since I did the school board before and I'm back again like a crazy person. I know that the board of supervisors has always supported the school system or at least in the last hundred years has, you know, very deeply in your heart. And I realize that and I appreciate that, and, and we promise to bring you a budget of meaning.
Again, to echo any of the other comments, this is a very productive meeting. I do look forward to the continued conversation, you know, not only just in, in the logistics of thinking of capital improvements and the regular budgetary needs and our concerns. You know, I, I, I look forward to a better future for Nelson County as a whole. Obviously, our children are a big piece of that, but overall, it's every single person who lives in this county that we're interested in their future, and that this to be a very viable, healthy and safe and economical place to live. I do, I do think we're going to make some great strides. You can add me to it, if you want, Mr. Reed. But I will say, I would like to have more in-depth conversations, like career and technical education. And I hope that with permission from staff, that I can continue those conversations with some of the staff, seeing how I can help facilitate with some of the relationships I have in the region. So that's, I think that post-COVID is going to be the next step that we grow in this county, is focusing on that technical education. And I'm sure as we get into the weeds, we definitely are going to find that to be the biggest need, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker. So I appreciate everybody coming out to do this. Like I said, I hope this is the first of at least a couple more weeks. I've listened to everybody, you know, that wants, but they want to have to employ diversity throughout this county. It's not just one people, it's all people. We need to work on the diversity in the schools, outside the schools, because the world is changing and we need to change with it.
Well, this has surpassed my expectations on a lot of levels. It's been a real heartfelt afternoon, which I didn't expect going into it. And, you know, you know, my commitment to the quality of life and the quality of education is still here for all of us. And I look forward to working with Mr. Chief on our next steps and working with y'all.
So I'd like to thank Chairman Reed. I'd like to thank the members of both boards. One of the things that I love about this is not only was it a free exchange of ideas, but looking around the room, we have such a diversity of people as far as their backgrounds and what they bring to the table and their discussions and their viewpoints, whether it be experience or the, the job fields that people are in. And I think this is going to make for a tremendous working relationship. Very excited that we've had this meeting, very pleased with the outcome. And Mr. Harvey, to your point, there are a lot of tough decisions that are going to have to be made going forward, especially if this enrollment continues to drop the way it was. And all I can do is pledge to you that we will do everything we can to work with you all to bring the cost is, you know, do, do the best we can with the cost. So again, there are so many moving parts to this, as you know. But you all have been such a friend at schools over the years and just as recently as when we had the problems with the trap. You know, we had a big meeting and had a lot of tough questions for a lot of people, and we did a lot of walking, and we saw it was prime, once, once we all, all of us understood it, and we all learned a lot of it. And so I look forward to it, look forward to working with you, Mr. Reed, on our next steps, and thank you, everyone.
Chairman, the motion is adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
I may adjourn, I may adjourn.
All in favor? Mr. Chairman, one question for Shannon and Candy. Whose document is this? The blue and green college, is that Candy's or yours?
How do you wear your vest? We're all supposed to match today. Me and David. You better wear it next time. You better wear it on Tuesday, okay?
What?
You mean, how?